Or did you a copy of that email?
Okay.
But it may not require anything to talk.
Jamie's not on the screen.
If he wants to zoom, it's the same.
He's coming.
There's Natasha.
Hi Natalie.
My name.
Natasha, what the hell? Well, it's kind of the Natalie.
Face mask.
What is your real name? Natasha's pretty close.
You're thinking about the old Rocky Bullwinkle cartoon with Natasha Boris.
Is that what I was thinking about?
Is your husband's name Boris?
No.
Do you know anybody named Boris?
It is 9:00 AM. I am going to call this meeting of the Carrington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I believe Commissioner Van Duzen, if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take calls from individuals if they feel like they do not want to appear in person. And the number, the two numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297. And we will address those items during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any on the agenda for the commissioners?
No.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the October 13th, 2020 agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. The only thing is, is we'll move items number nine and 10 up as soon as we approve the minutes. Our Highway Chief has a meeting that he needs to get to, so we'll get those things taken care of so he can be on his way. With that, I'll, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the October 6th, 2020 meeting. Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries. All right, so we'll move right on to item number nine then. Action to reappoint the Highway Superintendent for SDCL 3111-1. Got a motion by Gable. We'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any comments, questions? This is just something that is required by law that we need to do every two years. And so we're just taking care of some housekeeping.
This is for a period of 24 months.
Yep.
Yes. Looks like it goes back. Wow, source. Yep.
We're not sure why we have to do that, but it is required under South Dakota by law.
Well, we do, we also do the Veteran Service Officer. There's, we also are required to do that, but I think that's every four years.
We've always done that. The official's first time we've ever done this, so.
All right, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose that motion carries. Rick, would you want to come up now for item number 10? Action to approve a change order on the Willow Creek Bank stabilization project?
Just find that while you're here.
You want to give us a little, I don't know if that's purple or not.
Information. I think you've talked about this before, it's just.
Good news. Yes, this was a reduction of $23,489 due to the fact that when Clark Engineering put it together, they put in there in case the asphalt was damaged, where they had to dump the rock off the edge of the road. And they did no damage to the road, so that part was taken off, so.
I'll second that.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. What was the amount again, Rick?
$23,489.
And this is with credits, correct? To the original, original contract price and contract.
The original contract.
Seventy-eight thousand, yeah, okay.
All right. That's good.
I'm not sure if we needed this, but it's a good thing to have it as a matter of record, so. We did that with the courthouse projects too, so.
Makes it all legit, that one. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries. Very good. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
What was that? Okay, so now we'll move back up to monthly reports, and we'll start with our Director of Legalization, Shawna. Good morning.
I'm looking at myself thinking, ah. I'm just going. I'm lucky I got an agenda out. Good morning. Okay, so we in our office are getting ready for our year-end date of November 1st. That's basically the culmination of everything that goes on throughout the year. And then we have about four months to get through building permits, finalizing anything, doing my market analysis, and working on what we're going to do with our new values in getting them out March 1st. So that all kind of starts now, and that's what we're going to be working on for the next few months.
Very good. Any other questions for Shawna?
I do have number.
Eight.
Eight, if I can do that.
Sure. Yep. Item number eight is action to approve the purchase of computer equipment for the Director of Legalization office.
Connecting point had come through. We need to update our windows. So there's going to be some updates of our, they can just actually come in and update it, but it does look like we needed about four new computers. I didn't order any last year, that's probably why there's four this year. But the total price for these four new computers is only $5,379. We saved approximately $2,000 by signing the contract with connecting point, so they no longer charge to come in and actually set them up.
That's part of the managed.
That's part of the man, yep. Normally, like I said, it would have added another $2,000 and a half back coming, because I'm like, what? It's all, this is all it is, for four computers? Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So this is.
I was pleasantly surprised by.
This is not in your 2020 budget, though.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Oh, it is.
New computers are always in my budget.
Yep.
Move to approve.
Normally, it's three, this year it's four.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other discussion?
And this is for four?
This is for four, yep. Four machines. I was pleasantly surprised by that phrase.
Right, very good. All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries as well.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move on to the auditor.
Um, let's see. We have had 4,670 applications for absentee ballots of that amount. 3,471 have voted. So we do have a number, the mailouts that are still out there. And I want to caution voters that if you were mailed a ballot in the initial mailing on the 18th of September, you cannot take that ballot to your polling place on election day. The election workers cannot accept those ballots at the polling place. Those ballots have to come back to the auditor's office. And if you intend to vote on election day, instead of voting the absentee that you received in the mail, you need to contact us before you go to the polls. Otherwise, it's going to slow down the process at the polling place. The election workers are going to get a book. It's going to indicate whether you have voted, been sent a ballot, or not voted. If it, if your name is listed and it says ballot sent, those election workers are going to have to call my office to verify that I have not received that ballot yet before you can cast a ballot at the polling place. So we do, I do need to caution voters on that, on that process. And it will slow things down at the polling place if you don't, if you aren't proactive.
The deadline for those absentee ballots to be in your office is?
7:00 PM on election night.
So they can bring them in on election day?
On election day, yep. They can use, put them in the Dropbox. I also have to caution people, don't wait to the last minute. With the primary election, we were downstairs at the back door at 7:00 by the Dropbox. And just after 7:00, car drove up and with a ballot to hand off, and we could not take it because it was after 7:00 PM. I had to turn it away. So that is one thing for voters to remember. Also, remember that you cannot wear campaign material into the polling place. And you also cannot wear it into the courthouse if you're coming up here, because we are a polling place currently. We are an absentee polling place right now, so you cannot wear campaign materials. Our security officer downstairs has been helping us a lot with that. Uh, the deadline to register to vote is a week, is next Monday. Your voter registration has to be filed in this office by 5:00 PM. We cannot take postmark voter registration forms. It has to be filed here. I'm getting a lot of emails, people wanting to submit their voter registration electronically. Not allowed in the state of South Dakota unless you're an overseas citizen or a member of the military with a current South Dakota driver's license. You have to have that. Uh, those are just a couple of things we're running into. We are not, um, it's our policy to not give out information on candidates. Um, it could be construed as, you know, trying to influence somebody. We had a call this morning, a very rude voter who swore at one of my employees on the phone when we could not help her get information on a certain candidate. We recommended that she call the Secretary of State's office to get some information or look up, look it up online, but we're not allowed to give out information on a candidate. It could be, we could be influencing.
Your office has to take a neutral stance.
Exactly, exactly. And, um, yeah, she was very rude. She swore at my employee, and then she hung up on herself. Um, some people are just a little bit very suspicious when they bring their ballots in. Now, you know, asking us now, is this ballot going to count? It always has before. It's going to count this time, too. Anyway, that's an update on the voting. Um, I've worked, yesterday I worked on tax levies. Got pretty much caught up on those, so I can get those submitted to the Department of Revenue shortly. Um, the other thing is for the CARES Act funding. So far, we have received $525,112.14 in reimbursements. We are scheduled to receive, no, I'm sorry. We've received $625,533.95. We are scheduled and authorized right now. I did get caught up on our payroll submissions for the Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center. So we are authorized to receive another $525,112.14.
Would you read that first number again?
We have received $625,533.95.
Thank you.
We are scheduled to receive another $525,112.14. And then I've got some estimates of what we could receive um, for our October and December payrolls, and that's another $524,450. And that's just an estimate based on the amounts that I've already submitted, so. We could come pretty close to the 1.8, just with the salaries we have left to, to pay out, if we can get everything submitted on time, so. Caught up on that, I am submitting requests also for some of the equipment. We, the laptop in the Veteran Service Office was approved for reimbursement, and the two from the Emergency Management Office were also approved, because in the instance of that office, there's two people in there. If one of them becomes ill, um, the other one could also be exposed. They might, they could both be working from home at some point, so. Those laptops will allow them to work remotely, so. Um, I think that's about all I've got. Taxes, voting, and CARES Act.
On the CARES Act funding, you may want to contact Hugh for that last amount, like the December. It sounds like they're going to go by estimates and not actual, just so that that gets in early enough.
Well, our payroll for December is the 22nd. So I think I will be able to, to get everything together. I can't believe they're going to let us submit estimates, because they are sticklers on. They've already ruled out that the cook in the detention center is not a qualified reimbursement, which I argued with them, that she works directly with inmates. Why, and her, she, her South Dakota retirement is a public safety amount. I, she's 8%. I don't understand why they're disallowing that, but. Okay. Okay.
All right.
The sooner the better, I guess, so that we get that in. Yep. Um, I think that's, other than today, is going to be very hectic after being closed yesterday. For the federal holiday, people are coming in. It's going to be heavy today. Um, also received word that the governor has proclaimed the day after Thanksgiving and all-day Christmas Eve as time off for state employees. And our policy is to follow the state. So I did send that email out to everybody. You don't need to act on it, because it's part of our personnel policy, but we usually note it in the minutes closer to that day, so.
Sounds good. Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments for Cindy? Now, we'll move on to item number seven then. Action to approve the auditor's account with the treasurer and note the monthly registered deeds fees. Uh, monthly registered deeds fees are $40,303.65. And then you've got the auditor's account with the treasurer showing all of the cash and cash items on hand as of the last business day of September. Um, also shows you the fund cash balances as of September 30th. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Comments, questions? Hearing none, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries. All right, we'll move down then to item number 11. Action to declare computer equipment and the Sheriff's Office surplus to be destroyed, and that list is in your, um, with your information. But Cindy, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, just, um, these are a number of items that the sheriff has deemed surplus to be destroyed. Older items, laptop, a couple of tough books, a pro book.
All right, motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any questions? Hearing none, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries. All right, so, um, item number 12, action to change the November 3rd meeting date. Something we typically have done. So, yep, you will need to meet on Thursday, November 5th in order to canvas the votes of the general election. Right?
Second.
Second. Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Um, I guess, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Propose that motion carries.
Right, right. November 3rd, I will, this, this office will be occupied with, um, the panels that will be processing all of the absentee ballots that we receive.
We typically, that's something we do every time.
Which, by the way, Cindy, just to, just to reiterate the fact that there were some questions that came up to me in terms of whether or not those ballots can be counted ahead of time to speed up the process. You can't do that. You can organize them so that they're ready to be counted on election day.
Right, and actually, actually, once the absentee people are done processing, we can actually start counting those absentee, running them through the machine, but we cannot release any results.
Not before election day.
Not before election day, absolutely not.
That was the question.
Nope, nope, election day, they come in here, uh, in the morning. Uh, there's 16 of them right now, and may need to increase that number based on how many, uh, more absentees we get through the 2nd of November, which is the deadline to vote in the courthouse, is November 2nd. Election day, you cannot vote in the courthouse. You do need to go to your polling place. And that will be, be determined on how many, how many more ballots we get in. I'm thinking it's going to be close to adding another panel, so.
All right. Let's move on then to item number 13. Action regarding damage to the county's homeless client's rental room. Is Sarah on? I don't know, is this something that we want to just postpone until she's back? Is it something that we need to address, like?
Well, I think so. With the discussion that we had, Madam Chair, last week, was that we needed to take action to, to make the recommendation to move forward with paying that so that the hotel could get that room back in service.
Right, I just don't know.
If there was a.
If Sarah's not able to join. If there's any questions.
I don't know.
Do I? That's what it's about.
Right.
Did they have any insurance on that at all?
No.
No?
No. The thing is, oh, go ahead.
Not everything in that room is new, so I can't see the full amount, but I can see some other amount.
I, uh, I kind of have mixed emotions about this. I, I think that we want to maintain a good rapport with the, with the business. I think that's important, because, uh, they've been servicing that now for several years, and this is the first time they've had this trouble. I don't, uh, I, I really am frustrated with the people destroying the room. I mean, that part of it really is bad. Now, my understanding is that the judges will ask for restitution to help pay for some of the damages now. Does this mean if we pay for it, will the judges back off? You know, you don't understand what I'm saying. They're going to say, well.
It's already been referred, I think, to the state's attorneys.
Even if restitution is ordered.
Yeah, but you may not get it happen.
Right.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
You can't get water out of a rock.
The thing.
But, but the thing is, is that, um, it's a service that's being offered to us, and we've been, of course, been paying $500, what is it, $530 a month? That's a month, and I see that we have motel rooms on our expense deal for $100 a day, so the $540 is pretty cheap. Of course, I, I think that hotel, that's $100 a day is probably a little nicer than this one. But it's not a, I don't know. I have mixed emotions about the thing.
I would just add, um, you know, part of the issue is, is nobody was watching over this. It was their property, and they weren't going in there, you know, had not as much damage happened. If that would have been happening.
I believe that was, I'm sure that people served, although that was a cool good thing.
Right.
In this case, yeah, we did.
Some of the, some of the damages that were sustained in this room are from the result of a domestic assault that occurred in the room, which those parties were arrested and charged with, I believe. But some of it is for just neglect to the room and damage, so. I think, um, you know, we're looking for action on this. Is that what we're doing? I would make the motion to, um, to go ahead and move forth with this cost so that we can get this room fixed. Then we need to, as a county, we need to reevaluate how we're going to proceed with this. And I think that's the next agenda item on, on doing this in the future. I think that, um, this hotel owner is, is out from being able to rent this room until this damage is repaired. People that did the damage have been incarcerated, and they don't have anything to, you know, have any money to pay for the damage. And so this might be one that we just have to, have to swallow and fix the room and move on and do things differently in the future. But as much as that pains me to say that, uh, it's, it's not really the, the hotel owner's fault that they're out $1,400 for damages to their room. And so I'd make a motion to go ahead and, and pay this cost and move forward.
And that cost is $1,469.
Correct.
All right, and Johnson seconds it.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
I think just, we need to reevaluate this, this policy, or maybe there's some things.
I. I think we should, uh, do that likewise. Uh, I do think that there might have been some previous damage in there. Uh, one of the items I do remember from looking at this list was the cost of the refrigerator, which wasn't, so I would, uh, as a counter proposal, I would say we pay for 80%.
You're making a substitute motion then to pay 80%?
Motion of 80%.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All right, so we'll vote on the substitute motion then. I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Everybody voted?
Yeah, I, I, for me, I support it, I guess. I just, I'm wondering what that amounts.
80% of 14.
Are you voting in favor of the 80%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Myra voted?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I voted behind my mask.
Okay.
$1,175.20 is 80% of the.
Yeah, I think that's all right, because I got $500 for labor to clean it up, and I, I don't know, that might be a little spendy there, I don't know, but, yeah.
All right.
I'm all right.
So, we're going to, 80% passed, so now we'll go back to the original motion then, I guess, and.
Yes, yeah, that takes care of the motion. Yeah, we'll have to go back.
All right, well, that's taken care of. Then let's move on to item number 13.
15.
14. Discussion possible action regarding continuation of room rental for the homeless clients. So we have a note from our welfare director. Uh, what is your wishes on this? Okay.
And then also, so that this doesn't happen again. This might be, even in spite of, despite COVID, we might need to say this, we could take somebody in there to the motel, check in every day or something, something like that, where to catch some of this. At least, it might, I don't know, a good case, but potentially, you know, you don't want to take, you could catch a day's worth of damage instead of a week's worth of damage.
And technically, the county is the renter of the room, so I, I think we would have the, I, I don't know, maybe something run by Becky, but I would think that we would have the. I, I don't know, maybe something run by Becky, but I would think that we would have the right to check on the status of the room, or the renting.
Something else that I don't know has been common practice, but typically homeless individuals, if they're truly homeless, ICAP, you know, takes care of those individuals, it does take a while to get them into a facility. So, having a room isn't a bad thing, but something those individuals really need to, part of that should be that they have to do a coordinated entry program, which is an eight-hundred number, which they get on a list then, and then they'll get, we would get reimbursement for some of that, and then they would find them another location, and I don't know if that's been happening. So, that should be another stipulation, that if these individuals are going to take advantage of our, you know, one of our rooms, then they need to go through that process, and not just get stuck.
Well, so, like, I, I do think we should monitor, the question is, who's going to monitor?
Well, I think that's incumbent upon.
Are you going to have a welfare director, if you're gonna have one of the police officers stop by every other day, or the welfare director, or who's going to monitor the room?
That's kind of something.
It's a good idea, but who's going to do the follow-up?
That's, yeah, that's something, you know, that we kind of discussed, if we contacted ICAP, they would have a social worker, and that individual would do that. That would be part of their duties that they would do. So, that is something that could happen. Alright.
I think we got a roll by out there.
And the other thing we want to, just, just for discussion, we want to keep into, in the back of our minds, we are coming upon the cooler part of the year, and if this happens on a weekend, or happens at night, you know, five o'clock at night, four o'clock at night, and it truly is a situation where they are, where they need housing, I think we need to be prepared for that.
Yep. Alright, so basically then, we're just going to do discussion, put it on the agenda at a later time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Alright, get more information, try to get a little bit better. Alright. Well, then Jamie is here, we'll move on to item number fifteen, discussion possible action to enact a ban on open burning. What is the status out there?
Oh, good morning.
Morning, Jamie.
Well, we're looking at, I was actually contacted this morning by the city of Watertown Fire Department, and I also reached out to all four of their towns, county departments. Most of them, after discussion with all of them, we're in agreement that we're now moved into where we need to probably take action. I was called out Sunday evening after the high winds, and looking at what the state put out on yesterday, email coming out of the climatology out west, the extension service. Winds are going to be a big factor all week, we're going to remain dry, there is a couple of slight chances for moisture tonight, with very high winds tomorrow. Not much expected, maybe some more Saturday, as far as precipitation, but moving forward, those relative humidities are going to be remaining low throughout the week, and about the six to ten days still looks under precipice, so.
I'll make.
At this time, they're all favoring to probably put that into play.
I second that.
Alright, so we have a motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman, any other discussion?
Fire emergency, yep.
So, what we are passing is a resolution to enact the county's ban on opening, open burning, which was set by ordinance.
It was a red flag warning.
And when, when the time is appropriate, the board also has to take action to lift.
We're going to reevaluate that on a weekly basis.
We'll leave it on, okay, alright. We'll revisit it every week and see how things.
We do have some cooler temperatures coming, but I just, National Weather Service, I'm not seeing much for precip.
A foot of snow might cancel this.
Correct. I did have one fire chief ask me the question on, he does have a rural farmer that's asking about how to go about it, if it's still in, can they apply for that permit? Or come in front of you for?
We don't have a permit.
Okay.
And this also does not include any municipalities.
Okay.
Yeah, we do not have a permit, I think it's something we talked about, and it never, never got moved forward on.
When you say permit, you're talking about a burn permit?
A burn permit where during, during, during a burn ban.
This, this.
A special authorization shows a nest under section F on that too, that they can come before the county board of commissioners. I can hear this question now.
Who is, what is that under, is that a state?
That's under ours, in the latest.
Maybe I'm wrong then, let me.
I don't see a permit in my office, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I.
We've never done that. So, it'd be a plan sort of thing, I mean, they would have all.
They would have to lay out what specifically they're doing and their plan on how to control it.
Yeah, that's.
Yep, similar to that. I don't, I don't believe the gentleman that was asking that is in any hurry, according to the fire chief, but it may come into where.
Is it a structure?
No, it would be a pasture.
Okay.
A burn ban means no.
Okay, so if they do, okay, I, I'm wrong, yeah, special authorization, they would need to get on this board's agenda, and this board would have to take action to allow it, so it's not something that can be done, it's going to need planning, yep.
Is there any requirements as part of that?
Well, approval does not relieve the authorized party from any requirements of a section three of the ordinance, and it does not relieve the authorized party from any civil liability for damages caused.
So, they're held liable, we are not.
Right, whether, yeah, if this, this board, you know, would approve it, they are still held liable for any damages.
So, there is a permitting process that can go through, do we have, we don't have the permit?
I don't have.
There is no permit form that I'm aware of, they just have to come before this board with their plan.
Okay.
And then this board has to take action, so it's something that's going to need planning to get on the agenda.
Alright.
Yeah, week by week, depending on what the weather does and continues to happen.
We did.
Well, it is, it is really dry, I mean, because I had somebody just across the road from me that they were out there with stock chopper and started a fire along the fence line.
It's one spark right now, it's so dry.
So, it does happen. Alright, so we have a motion, a second, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries then, and we'll get that out to the media.
Yep. Good.
That does not cover towns and villages.
They're incorporated themselves.
Just the county, just the county, our, our.
They have to enact their own measures, if they're a, register whatever you call them, municipality in the small towns, have their own boards, so.
I'll continue visiting with them on a weekly basis. Very good, a couple of them called this morning and favored it, so.
Alright, thanks Jamie. Item number sixteen, and action to approve claims for payment.
Total claims are in the amount of one million ninety dollars, one million ninety thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Of that amount, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Our county claims, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents are state pass-through. On the first page of your claims in the election budget, you can see what it costs us to send out election-related materials, including absentee ballots and voter registration confirmations, that's five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Typically, that number is much lower.
Yeah, we have never mailed out this many ballots before, I'm thinking the election budget may need a supplement before the end of the year. On page three, towards the bottom of the page, we have the catastrophic legal budget, and that budget is overspent at this time by seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, and that's due to an increase in claims across the state that we did not, we were not, we did not know was going to happen. So, we will need to do a commissioner's contingency transfer next Tuesday to supplement that budget, because per law, we cannot have any budgets in the red at the end of the year. This is the fourth quarter payment, so we should have no more payments through the end of the year, I hope. On, on page seven, you can see at the top of the page, eight thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-four cents were for those water heaters at the jail that have been on back order, and they finally have arrived and been taken care of, I believe. That's the only thing that I have, unless somebody has any questions on any claims.
Move through.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, that motion carries, item number seventeen, action, possible discussion on COVID-19 practices, procedures, policy, anything this week? Alright, item number eighteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
I have several of those, the first one is the emergency management budget in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. That is CARES Act money that we received for the purchase of laptops in the emergency management office. And, let's see, another five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents for the emergency management office, and that was for wipes and sanitizer and thermometers to add to the stockpile in case of need.
Alright, got a motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen, any other discussion? So, those will probably also be allowable, or have those been turned in on the CARES Act funding for the wipes and sanitizers? Or is that?
We received, we received reimbursement for those.
I thought it was a cross.
So, we can put that back into the E M budget.
Alright, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, item number nineteen, action to approve personnel changes.
We have one personnel change, and this is to add a part-time correctional officer to our pool of part-timers, Brittany Schlesman, step four, nineteen ninety per hour.
So, move.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number twenty, action to approve travel requests, I don't see any this week. Item number twenty-one, public notices, where there could be a possible form of commissioners. And the individuals that will be just.
Representative John Mills is going to be leading the discussion, so.
Alright. Okay. Anything else? Alright, let's move to old business then, item number twenty-two, is there any old business? Hearing none, any new business, item number twenty-three. Alright, we're to the open.
Madam Chair, I do have something for the open. Today, out at the Heritage Theater at the Watertown Event Center, at three o'clock, we're going to District Five Representatives, and Senator Schoenbeck will be giving a presentation on CARES Act funding as it relates to nonprofit organizations, if you want to apply for that. That's at three o'clock, and then for profits is at four o'clock. So, if you have questions about receiving grants from the CARES Act funding, the four hundred, part of the four hundred million dollars that the state's allocated, you might want to consider attending that. Also, coming up on the fifteenth, the Watertown Development Company is having their annual meeting, and we're going to be doing that on Zoom this year, virtually, so I'll be attending that, so, that's all I've got, thank you.
We all should have received an invite on that. I don't know if anybody else did, but.
No desserts.
No, nothing this year, it's all virtual.
Mint in the mail.
Danny, you are, yeah, if you'd like to come up and state your name and tell us what you would like to talk about during the open.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning, thank you for your time. As you know, Veterans Day is coming up, November eleventh, and traditionally, we use, utilize Tannington County Extension Service Building, and we're working on the program right now. We would like, at this point, to be able to utilize that, and because of COIAs, I don't know if there's any been, any changes in new restrictions, anything that we should know about, that if we can utilize the facilities, that it worked out really good for the veterans and.
So, you talked to Becky?
No, I have not.
Okay, there's, I'll say a reason why I would, but it will be, you will be asked, everyone will be asked to be masked.
And that is fine with me, and in fact, I.
Except maybe the, maybe the keynote speaker.
Right.
We don't have a policy for masks, no. We don't have a policy for masks.
We can, we can, we can have you suggest.
Recommend, suggest, that's what, that's what yours.
Yeah, that was one of my questions coming up.
That's going to be on you to do that, as far as you're.
Would we be able to require it in a county facility?
Yep.
Just as a suggestion.
Recommend.
I wouldn't say require, no.
No.
But, your organization can strongly encourage people to wear that.
Okay.
And to socially distance.
As you know, American Legion takes care of Memorial Day, BFW takes care of Veterans Day program, and we do have a lot of speaker lined up, and we do plan on social distancing. We, I have to go talk to our radio partners to see if they would broadcast it live, which would probably, more than likely cut down the number of people that are there, so we, we think it works out fine to do it traditionally as we have in the past, and.
Good.
Yep.
I just want to make sure everything's okay, and if there's any changes because of COVID, COVID, we, we would need to know that.
And we have posted, we have posted at our facilities, yeah.
And most organizations like us and American Legion, and now when we have a meeting, we face the chair six feet apart, so that somebody would either have to stand in the back, or.
Yeah.
And that, so, it would, that would, I think, fulfill the requirements.
Would you have the city band there as well?
They have not been performing at city functions, and that, I did plan on asking them, but I'm pretty sure that they will not participate.
I went to an concert at the Goss, and the wooden instruments actually have masks on the, on the end of their instruments. So, they're, they're being very careful, they have a reduced number of musicians, so it might be something, if you want to have musicians, they're just.
And I would, I would leave that totally up to them, how they operate that, and they could have the band there and spread out six feet too, and I'm sure sound as good as they normally do.
But, yeah, just.
Well, it's, you just have to contact the extension to make sure the place is available, this board doesn't usually take action on any of those.
Okay.
Talk to Becky.
Yep.
I appreciate your guidance.
Appreciate you.
For them. Yeah, uh we'll be talking to uh radio stations, and we're looking at Zoom and YouTube and things like that uh to reach as many people as we can. We do know that there's quite a few people out there in my age category and up that uh don't use computers and
Right.
And yeah, so they would be utilizing radio.
And I think uh, I think we've done that in the past where we've carried that audio.
Yeah, and you did that Memorial Day, and uh and we think there will be still a fair amount of people that would like to be live.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just get a hold of Becky, make sure and get a hold of Becky.
All right, thanks.
Um, one more thing for during the open, um which I should have included in my report. We cannot require masks at the polling place. I have checked with the Secretary of State's office, there would be disenfranchising in a voter if we turn them away for not wearing a mask, so masks are very much encouraged. But we cannot turn a vote away for not wearing masks.
Right, that's kind of been our stance.
Yeah, yeah, it's a federal election and and we have no authority. Okay.
Sounds good.
I would strongly encourage masks. No.
All right, um any other items for the open? Do we have a need for executive session under contracts? All right, then I would look for a motion to go into executive session under number three, preparing for contract negotiations with employees. So move, bye. Uh Van, um Van Duzen, did you want a second? All right, all favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm going to excuse myself.
Okay, yeah, it is.